Is there any public participation? Right over there. Kind of in hot spot.
Ignore you, that's hard to do.
Kim will probably move. There you go, perfect. There you go. Alright, that's good.
My name's Adam Huzzy, we're at thirty-one school street. I guess there was several pitches taking of thirty-one school street. And they were supposedly sent to several school board members during the last school board meeting. I got the minutes here, so I know somebody from twenty-one school streets has gone after seven.
Okay.
And I'm just wondering why I've requested to see the pitches and I can't get them.
They're public record.
They're not a public record unless they're shown at the meeting themselves.
Still public record, they came through email.
No, I don't say it, I don't want to.
People can send what they want, we don't have them. I've never seen them, I don't know who's got them, I don't know who they've been sent to, and they were never shown or just shown here at a meeting, so I don't have anything to give.
She didn't have the pictures, did you get the email? I didn't get the email.
I checked the email that evening, and it was listed to all of us that we all got pictures. There were five or six pictures.
But was there an attachment on it, because I don't remember seeing an attachment.
Yeah, the pictures were attached.
At the bottom?
I'd like to see.
I don't have an issue.
Well, just put it in your request.
We have.
But you can't put a request in, we didn't get them, so.
Yeah, you were on a meeting, you were in a meeting, I believe, in Concord.
No, no, I never received the email with the pictures.
Okay, um, we will, we'll.
They're on our shirt.
Yeah, we'll get them to you.
Alright, and my other question, what about the pool?
Okay.
The swimming pool?
That, it was reflected in the minutes that it will be removed when the weather is ready.
It's gonna be sixty-one degrees Thursday.
You did.
Okay, no, we're not gonna be.
The facilities director has already got a comment.
I was just wondering why pitches have been taken of my property, and I've requested them several times, and I keep getting run around, that's all.
So we'll send you the pictures, and quite frankly, Adam, this really isn't our issue. It's not, it's not a school board issue.
No, I understand that, but.
So, I'll make sure you get the pictures, and if you have an issue with the pool, that's a civil issue between you and the neighbor, and.
No, no. I understand that, but I was told to, you know, I'm trying to be nice about this, and I requested it the way I was told to when I called, and the way I was explaining if several of the members got the things, then it became public.
But we weren't CC'd on your email, and you didn't call either one of us, I mean, Joel could have forwarded them to you if he had them, and you talked to him.
Uh, I guess my question is, because I've received another phone call about the pool, you'd stated, Madam Chair, at a meeting that the pool needed to be removed ASAP.
Right, but where it's winter.
Why hasn't it? Well, it wasn't winter then, we've had the warmest fall on record.
But we didn't know that, and I think we.
And so, and so when the superintendent stated at the last meeting that they had until the spring, was that the board's opinion, or was that the superintendent's opinion?
That was the superintendent's opinion.
Okay, thank you, we'll note that.
That was based on a conversation that I had with the homeowners, who are more than happy to move it, and based on a conversation with our facilities director, and with the code enforcement officer, who will be communicating with those folks in terms of what the setbacks have to be and where the pool has to be located too.
And he came up to the table after he spoke in public?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I think at that time, none of us told him.
We're trying to handle everything in a reasonable way with the butters and the neighbors of the school.
We kind of understood where he was at with that. I mean, there's no need to be nasty about it.
So how long would it take to get the pitches, if I go to the.
Well, I, any one of us, if I have your email in my folder, I will send them to you.
But you can't come to the office, because we don't have them, we never got them sent to us.
The office doesn't have them, apparently.
Yeah, and they're always sent to the board members, so nobody in the administration, so any one of us can forward that.
Yeah, and we'll make sure that you get them.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Any other public participation? Okay, on to approval of minutes for December seventh, two thousand fifteen, public session. Do you hear motion? Motion by Joe to approve, second by.
Second.
Joel, may discussion?
Uh, page five, who's Kelly? Who's taking minutes tonight?
Cynthia.
Oh, Cynthia, page five. About three quarters of the way down the, the, uh, page, where it starts off, Miss Carroll, it should say O'Connell and not O'Connor.
Ah, thank you.
And I checked through the rest of the minutes, and it was spelled correctly, I think that's the only place.
Okay, hearing non-alcapher vote on favor of approving the minutes for December seventh, two thousand fifteen, public session?
Aye.
Non-public session one, December seventh, two thousand fifteen minutes, do you hear motion?
I abstain.
Motion to approve by Joe.
No.
No, he stands up, stands.
No.
Okay. Alright, second by Kathy. Any discussion on these non-public minutes?
Just on page two, Kelly, um, just for clarification, about a quarter of the way down the page, almost halfway down the page, the concern about a, a staff member that was nominated commuting from London Derry. Mr. Welford did respond to me about the planning of relocating to Farmington, but my comment was actually that I was surprised that we get an applicant from that far away. I have no qualm, if somebody wants to travel three hours to come here, that's not my concern, but, so that really wasn't exactly reflective.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing non-alcapher vote all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to financials.
Your financial reports are in your packet. The first two pieces, the first one is the ACH lunch account, and this is the reconciliation done by our treasurer with the oversight of the SAU office, showing that there's a cash balance of twelve thousand, six hundred and five dollars. And, and this is for the, um, electronic payments that parents put into this account, and then eventually is transferred over into the general, general checking account, so it's for information only. And the second one is also for the general checking, um, account, showing its reconciliation, again, with support of the SAU office and oversight, showing that that cash balance reconciles, um, at the end of November for one million, three hundred, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. And then again, that's for your information only. And then, financials, if there are questions concerning the financial statement. Currently, on the general operating budget, or the general fund, we, shows that we have twelve point eight-two percent remaining, which is actually not a bad percentage at all, given this time of year being mid-December. All the salaries have been encumbered, but there are still going to be some things that are paid out in terms of salaries and benefits for, say, um, coaching positions, stipends, things like that, extracurricular fees like that, so.
So you've not encumbered those?
We don't, we do it until we're certain that the job has actually been completed, and it's, it's reviewed at the school level, signed off on, and then signed off at the SAU level. But we're working on those projections. I'll just leave it open for, for questions. Any of you have questions, specifics? I'll do my best to answer them for you.
Hi, Joe.
Did you get it, I, I thought in a, other, in a different conversation that you and I had, you said you did get a chance to break out the cost, the legal fee cost for parent and teacher negotiations, is that in this packet?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Um, I, I sent it off electronically, thinking it had to do with something different.
Was the teachers in there as well, though?
It is, it's in a separate tab.
I apologize, okay, thank you.
Yep. Stan, did you have any questions?
No, well, I can, I can look.
Joe?
I'm good.
Okay.
Except for, well, except for one issue that we have.
Wow.
This is part of the budget.
No, let's just save that for later, because we have, let's just save that tomorrow. Okay. Going once, going twice, nothing else on financials? Okay, so now we have a presentation by the Coordinated School Health Committee. Well, whenever you're gonna be using that, yeah, that's okay.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Um, let me see what he. So Brian, will the people at home be able to hear her? Okay.
Okay, so we're okay? Okay. Alright, hello everyone, my name is Liz Clark, I'm a Community Health Initiative Coordinator with the Strawford County Public Health Network, which is based out of Goodwin Community Health. And I've been coordinating the Coordinated School Health Initiative, which has been taking place this summer and fall in the school district. So I'm here today to talk to you briefly about, first, what Coordinated School Health is, what's been done so far, and the champions will discuss individual priorities for the schools that we develop. So thank you for having us here today. So just to kind of go over, Coordinated School Health is the equivalent to school districts, Farmington and Summersworth, it's funded by the United Way of Greater Seacoast. And two champions have been designated from each school to lead this effort. We have all of them here today.
Dave minus one, who's at a volleyball league tournament, basketball tournament. And I have been so amazed by the dedication of our Farmington champions, each and every single one of them, been so willing to roll their sleeves and take the time to really get this initiative up and running. And what I, while Farmington may have some lack of some resources, these champions, other members of the community, from what I've seen so far, and other work I've done as well, I think will be truly the key to success of Coordinated School Health here. So now we're just gonna go over what the framework is for Coordinated School Health. So Coordinated School Health is a CDC framework, it's had success in other states. Coordinated School Health envisions students to get the support they need to be successful at school, home, and in the community, ensuring they're resilient, healthy, successful adults. It does this by establishing lifelong healthy behavioral patterns, starting in kindergarten and building upon those throughout their education. Alright, so Coordinated School Health consists of works to strengthen eight different components, the school health together affects the whole health of the child. Each component makes a unique contribution, while also, also complementing the other, each other, while also complementing others, ultimately creating a whole that is more than just the sum of its parts. So for example, um, you know, if someone's being taught healthy behaviors in school, if they have the mental, they're mentally healthy, physically healthy, have family and community involvement, feel safe at school, have examples from staff at school about healthy behaviors. It leads to ultimately healthier students and more successful adults. Alright, so the progress so far, so the champions have dedicated a lot of time this summer and fall to get this up and running, and I have to give a huge thank, thank you to them. It's been really truly touching to see how much they care about their students, and are really willing to go the extra mile to ensure that they are healthy. So they completed a hundred-question initial school assessment, which is using the Alliance for a Healthier Generation Healthy Schools Program, it's based on the School Health Index. They, they did that for each of the schools, they've done staff presentations to try to build up support, they've been building a representative district wellness committee meeting, and we've met twice already so far. And by representative, really trying to get a diverse group of people, we had students, really would like to try to get some parents involved, other staff members, cafe services. And then we've been, went through a prioritization process, which we'll touch base on, and we've been researching best practices. Alright, so the top four to five priorities have been selected for each school, this has been driven by this initial assessment results. The champion expertise, the youth risk behavior survey from the middle school, then consensus from the wellness committee, we actually did a voting with the wellness committee on their top priorities. And then we, we got some feedback from some staff surveys. And just before we dive into the individual school level priorities, two overarching district level goals. Our two firsts, build and sustain our representative district wellness committee, and then identify and ensure a vertical integration of health curriculum by grade level, starting in kindergarten, and building upon those throughout their education. Alright, so now I'll turn the time over to our Valley View champions to touch base on the priorities they developed for the schools.
Liz, could you have the champions from each school introduce themselves before they give their priorities, so everyone knows who they are?
Hi everybody, my name's Abby Keller, I'm the music teacher at Valley View.
I'm Diane Futter, I'm the music teacher at Valley View. Um, the first one was about health curriculum, there's no health curriculum at Valley View right now. Two grade levels integrate one unit, I integrate as much as I can, but there is a hassle in that. The second one was the increase in physical activity, movement turns on the brain for learning and on task behavior. And our students right now, the one time they can have movement is, can be taken away from them as, um, kind of like the punishment for not doing what they need to do, and they need to be moving. So we need to incorporate, incorporate it more in the classrooms.
The third target's, excuse me, one of our goals to promote more health and wellness programs for the staff, as well as educating them on the importance of a healthy lifestyle. This could include stress management programs or fitness programs for the staff to be involved in. In order for our students to follow through with a healthy lifestyle, it's important for them to spread their knowledge on the subject, and also follow through with healthy habits during the school day, that our students can learn from, but also most importantly, follow themselves. And the fourth, our enrichment, enrichment experience is after school. We do have daily, the after-school program, which does offer some physical fitness activities for students to take part in and choose from, but it's our goal to expand these opportunities and offer a variety of activities targeted towards their interests, to get the students active and thinking healthy. So those are Valley View priorities.
Here we are, okay, my name's Donna Terry, I'm the school counselor at Henry Wilson.
And I'm Lori Arsenal, I'm the seventh and eighth grade school counselor at Henry Wilson.
So similarly to Valley View, our health education program, we want to collaborate with lots of different people, just our guidance curriculum is one thing. But we want to make sure throughout our school, the general feeling of health and wellness becomes a culture change. So the hows are coming, are coming sort of later, but it's just something that we want to shift here. And the other thing is the physical activities, so like you were saying, um, there, there is a PE class, but we want things like movement, more movement breaks in the class, more things built within the classroom to get the kids moving. So similarly to Valley View, those are some of the priorities.
And as well as the culture in the school, we want to bring the community in and encourage that same kind of a culture outside of our school. So we feel that if we can improve the family and community involvement in our initiatives that we're taking in the school, then we can have everybody on board, that our students will get the same messages that they're getting in school, at home as well, and that the community will be as, as involved and as educated as we can, can help them to be. So likewise, increasing parent education opportunities, we think is really important, because again, if we can help to teach the parents at home the same kinds of things that we're helping to teach our students and our staff, then we, we're all on the same page, and we're all hopefully valuing the same things to help students, you know, to become more healthy and to value that healthy lifestyle. And so again, on that same concept of the culture piece, if we can develop programs for all members of the school community to understand and value the healthy initiatives, healthy lifestyle, then there'll be that support to kind of keep that momentum going and encourage our kids to value the same things, and which we've shown already ultimately leads to their success.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Gray, I'm the school nurse at Farmington High School. For us, we actually had our top two priorities come in a tie, so our, you know, number one, we did more mental health support training and tools for the school community. This is not only education for the students on mental health, but as well as the staff. You know, right now, the main go-to people on mental health in our school building are our guidance counselors and the nurse, but we want everybody to have more education on it. Fifty-seven percent of the US population will be diagnosed with a mental health illness at some point in their lifetime, so mental health is a huge topic to be aware of. Our second one is establish a student-led drug committee. This was actually an idea brought forth by one of the students, a senior student on our wellness committee. We thought this was a really great idea, especially with the youth risk behavior survey in the past, and the drug use and abuse in the community. Third is implement student-initiated health and wellness activities. We thought this would be great to, once again, get the students more involved and proactive in their health, and help them to, you know, realize that healthy lifestyles are the key to success in the classroom. Develop programs for all members of the school community to understand and seek a more healthy lifestyle, just like what Henry Wilson said, it's important for us to model it for our students, so having the whole school community, having that healthy, healthy lifestyle is important. And if I maintain a health education program and further avenues for implementation and collaboration, right now, our students receive wellness for one year of their four years in high school, so we think that, once again, health is super important, so we'd like to see that increase if possible, or brought into more of the curriculum of different subjects.
Thank you.
Liz, did you, do you want to mention?
I just, just to jump in with Katie at Farmington High School, this afternoon we met with Liz from the Consolidated Health Program, we also met with a member of the community partners and a member from the United Way. And with the United Way's support, along with this program, Farmington High School will implement, hopefully beginning early February, a school-based therapy that put on by the community partners. And the United Way has graciously given us the vote okay, the financial means to do that, so we will be able to provide therapists at Farmington High School one day per week, there'll also be a person heading down to Henry Wilson for a day per week. So it gives us an opportunity, a lot of our kids who seek outside services, the opportunity to gain that there at Farmington High School, so we don't have to take away the barrier of traveling. So we're pretty excited about having that onboard. We tried that a couple of years ago, unfortunately weren't successful because of the financial impact it would have had on the budget, so by having the United Way take over on that part, we're pretty excited for that. So I want to thank Liz and the group there, I want bringing the United Way to Farmington High School as well as the community partners.
You guys have any questions for us?
Yeah, did you, who took the survey? Did you talk about that when I was turning around?
Are you the first to interview your survey?
No, not that one, that's the student.
Okay, so the.
The other, the other survey that you took.
Yes, that's right, um, yeah, so each of the champions were in pairs on the, and they gathered some feedback if possible from other school members as well on that.
So the students didn't?
No, this is just that's one of the strengths and the ability of the schools, it's just kind of the overarching, like they use each of the components to gather some key best practices and see where Farmington, where each of the schools lie on that spectrum, and from there, we're able to develop the, like, what areas they need the most.
Jones, do you?
Oh, that's right, and Cindy answered twenty-two of the questions as well, they're different.
I do. Will there be an effort to create partnerships and connections with local agencies and organizations, sort of like the local Boy Scout troop, or the rec department, the five hundred boys and girls club?
Absolutely, one, one idea actually, Josh Appleby is on our wellness committee, and one thing we talked about is connecting the area of farms and, you know what I mean, like walnut farms, or, we have U N H involved. What was U N H, a farm to table? I can't remember.
Yeah, so yeah, farm to school, we had a farm to school representative at our personal wellness committee meeting as well. And so, yeah, that's a huge part of this, really trying to get community members to be, members to be a part of this, and just kind of figuring out ties, like even just using a community partner as an example. I, you know, happen to, you know, connect with Lucy on some other, you know, public health initiatives in Strawford County, and having that connection with Lauren Rule, I think that's just, is a key to be able to, there's already some great services going on as a, as a community partner, and I'd like to.
We did talk to the five hundred and the rec, but our meetings have been right after school, so now we're looking at having the next one maybe later this month, so that they can send.
What do you anticipate might be workshops that could be provided to parents, like for instance, if you were looking at an evening workshop, is there anything that's kind of hit your radar yet, or?
Well, an example that was discussed was through the menu program, they have, um, one, one small example, I think it's a really great program, is the idea of, they, they create a meal, they, they provide a menu for a healthy meal, and then even provide some of the, the food, providing all the food ingredients for it. So it teaches, a family comes together and they, they eat the meal that night, and they eat, then they go home with the rest of the family, with the ingredients, they're involved, so, I mean, that's a small example, but I think a huge, and that's as far as the idea of bringing something that's a concept, but introducing it to the families, introducing it to the parents, and helping them. So I mean, it could be, it could be a range of topics that we think have, have to do with, I mean, being brought to the table, the why or yes is a huge, a huge focus. So if we can, if we can, you know, kind of just brainstorm, but talk about, you know, different ideas that can help as far as, you know, the risks or the money signs and things like that, so having those conversations with families, with, with community members, helping them more aware. We're still in the planning phase, so right now, we'll be developing work plans and stuff, through each of their priorities, we haven't like finalized everything, so if you guys have any feedback, definitely, champions or I know, but yeah, so we'll probably be coming back to you guys once we finalize.
When's your next meeting, just so?
Um, when can I circulate this meeting? It's January.
Uh, yeah, January, Wednesday, January twentieth, at three PM at the, here in this library at Henry Wilson.
Joe, do you have any questions?
Yeah, who's the ultimate responsibility for raising the child?
All of us.
No, the ultimate.
Somebody's child?
Yes.
As a parent?
There you go, thank you.
Yeah, I think.
They don't, in other words, you're saying that it's probably going to all of us, so we're gonna, we're gonna show you how to do this.
I don't think that that's what we're, I don't think that that should be, that's not enough for people to like to get out there, I think the idea of us working with these students for a large part of the day helps us to become involved in their overall success in school, and education in the third day for us to help encourage those concepts that will help their day be more successful and to attend the next presentation. And it's, but it's helpful to hear you say that, I've certainly been one that do the message that's received by families. And we have this need of opportunity, while they're in school and, you know, they still have critical development period, to try to instill some education across some parents that they may not have the time for, or, you know, they are working multiple jobs, and we're able to provide some of those, that education that hopefully does, you know, and, you know, because it's all, it's all the parents does, including at home, but they're hearing similar messages, I feel like that is gonna be all the most successful.
Joan, is there something?
Well, well, would you consider that neglect if they're not? If they, if they are neglected, you know, in what you're saying, in other words, if they don't?
I think our, we, if someone is neglected, we are mandatory to report it, unless it's a different step.
Is this more of a preventative approach? Is this more of a preventative approach? Just reaching, not just the students, but the community, families, you know, just having it be more of a culture, just a shift in the culture, that sort of thing. And again, it's the response to various forms of information, such as the YRDS, it gives us that, which is some of the things that our students are facing and the challenges that they're facing, and if we have an opportunity to educate them and offer information, whether it's to them alone or if it's their families or if it's members of the community that are asking us, hey, what do I do about this? How do I help my child or, you know, my neighbor with this? And then we have that opportunity to incorporate that. You know, I know these are going to get out there and try to enforce that and having, but it's there of offering information and the support.
Stan, do you have any questions?
Another question today, so I thank you for forming this coalition, for agreeing to the board on that, and helping the higher representative board to talk to the board and school, that you should have a cable on health program and help with wellness, the whole challenge really working, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I, I had a question about the high school, the drug committee. So the drug committee would be formed at the high school, but are you incorporating children that are younger in that, like middle school?
Do you have it finalized, all the plans that you have, and you need to be prepared? You know, I think, like, we try to tell these things, the students at this issue.
Yeah, I think it's, it's great. I just, I'd love to see that expand a little more, you know, broad across the district.
I agree, I think we could get something like, you know, that's that kind of critical period, you know, that would be great too, but I'm not, you guys...
And the other question is, so it's a committee, was any school board member invited to be on that committee? I mean, does that, is that something that we are supposed to participate in as a committee?
No, no, I'm not sure what the board policy says. You take a look, certainly.
Just, just a thought, you know, not that I'm hitting anyone up here, but you know what I mean?
We have such a variety of people, community members, great seniors.
So while we're on the air, our next meeting, January twentieth at three PM here, so any parents out there that have the time, they might want to attend. Okay, thank you so much for all your time. Yeah? Um, well, yeah, go ahead.
If we're looking for parents involved in, you know, scheduled in at two PM, I'm hoping that they're really interested in all of the parents that are, who would have to be at the two PM, that's the APs, so maybe we can adjust the time there, ask if they have to, or, you know, if there's a parent involved, too, for the stuff that I have in the queue to do.
Yeah, see if you're like, with five, I think.
Had you talked to the rec? What time was the rec looking at when you said later?
The rec was same, though, they didn't want to come and they're, you know, welcome there.
Good.
So, yeah, it's hard to put that earlier, but you did talk at the right time, but we, we hope more parents.
I mean, if they end at three o'clock, they're already back, so.
Okay, thank you so much, again.
Thank you, folks, for your hard work.
And we'll follow that up with some more good news.
We passed out this evening a copy of an article that appeared in the Union Leader, I believe it was a week ago Saturday, and the article was written by Dave Solomon, who's a reporter for the Union Leader, and the article talked about the success that five schools with more than fifty percent of students living at or near the federal poverty level met or beat the statewide averages in both math and English on smarter balance testing. And I just want to hit a couple of highlights. The premise was that when you look at a community and they use the example of Bedford, and they talk about the Riddlebrook Elementary School, there are a grand total of eleven kids out of four hundred and twenty-five that qualify for free reduced lunch in that building. And you would, I guess, rightly expect that that's a building where the scores would be very good, because it's a relatively affluent community, it is a community that can afford to put resources in its schools that perhaps less affluent communities cannot. And that was the premise of the article. It was not whether kids who live in less affluent communities are as smart as kids in rich communities, that was not the premise whatsoever. It was, in places where it's more difficult for the community to fund the resources in schools, traditionally, kids have not done as well. And yet, they found five examples of schools where the kids did as well or better than the state average in both math and English. And again, Valley View's third graders were one of those groups. And it talks about a couple of things. It says there are a handful of state, schools in the state that serve high poverty populations and still beat statewide averages in some cases quite impressively. Five schools with more than fifty percent of kids living at and near the federal poverty level beat the statewide averages in both English language arts and math. Valley View School in Farmington was one of those five. There is one inaccuracy in the article, and that is when they, they talk about the Whitefield Elementary Schools, the largest of the group, with two hundred and ninety-seven students. Valley View is significantly larger than that. So that's the one inaccuracy that you see there, and it talks particularly about compared to larger elementary schools in the state with four to five hundred kids. That's Valley View. And in talking to principal from Whitefield Elementary School, one of the things that she noted, the turnaround in their district, which began about five years ago, was when they got all of the schools, as she put it, the district began to get all the schools on the same playbook. When planning was done together, when people looked at the district as a K to twelve entity as opposed to, well, this is this school, and this is the middle school, and this is the high school. When you look at things K to twelve, that is when things began to crystallize for that district and things began to improve. And, and she says some things here that I, I think probably in the past might have been, been applicable to Farmington as well. We had a lot of things going on that were distracting us, lots of different programs and ideas, and schools were doing different things, so we decided we needed to be on the same page across the district with a focus on curriculum and instruction. And I think that's where we have moved. I think the same could have been said about us a number of years ago, but I do think that we now, just in, in the way and the administrators can certainly disagree if they like, but in the way that we build a budget, in the way that we have the conversations about curriculum, in the way that we talk about what happens at the elementary schools has an awful large impact on what happens at the high school. All of those conversations have occurred, continue to occur, and we look at district-wide planning as opposed to school planning. And then they talked about recurring themes in the article. A coordinated approach throughout the district, other common approaches, continuous assessment of student performance in one way or another, and immediate intervention on individual academic or behavioral problems. We do try to do our student, our intervention teams at various schools. We do have multiple assessments that we're doing on kids at every grade level, we have multiple data points on every student, constant promotion of a positive school culture. Kathy, you've been at the Henry Wilson, I think you've seen it there, I think if you walked in the high school, you walked in Valley View. Those of you who've gone to the annual day at Valley View, where they talk about the seven habits of highly effective students, leader in me, those are very positive school climate activities and things that are going on. Lesson plans closely aligned to the curriculum standards. And Atlas, the computer program that we've purchased and that all of our teachers are now using, you will see where every lesson has to be correlated to the standards. They have to identify the standards addressed by that lesson. Investment in computers for students and student-focused use of federal money targeted to low-income schools through the Title I federal program. You have seen the infusion of technology that we've tried to bring into play here in the last couple of years. You also know and voted a month ago that we were going to rearrange our Title I program to make full-day kindergarten a reality here in Farmington. So all of the things that you're hearing about here in these schools that have been successful are things that we've been working at ourselves. And finally, high expectations are also a key. And I think everybody has elevated the expectations here, not only of what we expect of the kids, but what we expect of ourselves. And I think the staff that work here have done a magnificent job in communicating those expectations to kids, and I think as you walked in the front door tonight, you saw the mission statement on the wall out there. That mission statement gets communicated to kids every day. And people are, in fact, held accountable, and our expectations for each other are high, and our expectations for our kids are high. And so I, I just think it's, it's a wonderful affirmation of what's going on at Valley View, and I think what will continue to go on and you will see happen here at Henry Wilson and move through the high school level as opposed to other schools within the state, that there are some very, very dedicated people working very, very hard to make these kids successful, and it's starting to show. And I think we should take great pride in that, because, again, Farmington is leading the way, not following and holding up the end of it. So congratulations to those folks at, at Valley View, wonderful job, great work, keep it up.
Thank you. Does, does anyone on the board want to comment? Nope. Okay, so now we have, we move on to per pupil cost report.
The, the report that we put in your packets is one that was sent out to us from the state on December fifteenth, and we just thought that for informational purposes, you might find it interesting. It lists their per pupil expenditures, or cost per pupil, as they now call it, for every school district in the state. Now, the cost per pupil is going to be different than what we traditionally charged Middleton in tuition, because it takes additional things into account, the cost of transportation, it essentially takes into account everything that you spend money on. If you call in the area agreement, there are certain things that are kept out in this cost per pupil calculation, nothing's kept out. And so, as you look through it, the state average at the elementary level is fourteen thousand five eighty-one, at the middle school thirteen six ninety-eight, and at the high school fourteen three seventy-one. And if you were to take a look at the second page, you would find that Franklin's Elementary Cost Per Pupil is twelve thousand eight eighty-nine. We do not have a middle school number listed, because the Henry Wilson is still classified as an elementary school for accounting purposes for the state. And you would also find that our high school is in at twelve thousand nine sixteen. So the, the total preschool through twelve average for all of the schools is twelve thousand eight ninety-seven. And again, there are a whole lot of different things that you can take away from this sheet. I think that, that Farmington has tried to support their kids at the best level that it can, and I think you would find that we're on the low end, certainly, but we're not, we're not completely out of the realm of what other people do. I think it's also important to understand that some of these really high numbers that you'll see in here are not indicative of schools that are regular, average, two or three hundred kid schools. And I would give you the example, if you go to the second page and you look at the ninth district down, Errol. Errol's cost per pupil is thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety, fifty-nine dollars. Now, having worked in Errol for a year, what you don't see in that calculation is the fact that the Errol School is a K to six school, which has a grand total of twenty-two kids in it. Twenty-two kids in one school. And the town zealously guards its ability to have its own school. They take great pride in that, and they do their very best to provide a good educational program for their kids. But because it is so small, their cost is, is more than twice what we would pay. Now, the other extreme on this, let's see if we can find it. I wanted to try and find Pinkerton Academy, and I don't see it here. Let me see if it's under dairy. No, it's not. Pinkerton Academy's per pupil cost is somewhere around twelve thousand and change. And you look at that and you say, well, geez, you know, they have all these wonderful facilities, and it's a great environment, and the whole nine yards. That's because it's approximately twelve thousand, just under thirteen thousand dollars per kid for thirty-four hundred kids. So when you have a student body that large that you can spread your costs out over, there are economies of scale. So these numbers don't tell you everything that you need to know, but what they do tell you is that Farmington is not totally out of the realm of where you'd like to see it, given the socioeconomic conditions of the community. So it's there just so you can see what other folks are doing and look at yourselves in that light, but it's really an informational sheet, that's about it.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Cobra and Pinkerton also have, I believe, have an endowment that they can dip into if they have to, so there is some support beyond what's on these papers.
Any other comments? Right, thank you. So now I'll move on to new business in the warrant articles for...
All right.
I already found a mistake, I found it too. On Article One. You can choose school board members, right? You can choose school board members on Article One, it says one.
Okay, yeah, I didn't have it in here. Here it is. Yep, Lawrie Article One should be two school board members, not one.
Okay.
You want to walk through them?
Yeah. Okay. I'm going to start right at the very beginning, this is a, this is a draft, and so what, this will be placed, the public display at the school, at the voting place, and at the S A U office at a minimum. So our deliberative session is scheduled for Saturday, January thirtieth, at nine AM at the Farmington High School Gymnasium, and it will be to discuss the warrant articles. We start with discussing warrant article two and so on and so forth, but in Article One, it is about electing school district officers. Yes, we have two school board members who are up for election, each with a three-year term. Our moderator, we do have a moderator in place right now to cover the deliberative session and the voting session, but the moderator does need to be re-elected for a one-year term. Our school district clerk is also a one-year term, and also our treasurer is a one-year Article Two, we've put this on historically, that shall the district accept and place and file the reports of the auditors, agents, committees, and officers chosen to conduct the prudent affairs of the district. We still would recommend that you put that out there so that the public can take a look at those reports whenever they so choose. And then Article Three is going to be for your general operating budget. Oh, let me read it verbatim for you. Shall the Farmington School District raise and appropriate, as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session, for the purposes set forth therein totaling, just for now, I've just left that blank. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be, and again, that's been left blank for now, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Farmington School District, or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA forty, colon, thirteen, Roma numeral ten, and ten... and ten, let's see, sixteen, to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. And to note that this, again, we put this as a matter of standard procedure, note this operating budget warrant article does not include appropriations contained in any other warrant articles. Let's see. Article Four is, shall the Farmington School District adopt a school administrative unit budget of, we've left that blank for now, for the forthcoming fiscal year of this school district? This year's adjusted budget of, blank, assigned to the school budget of this school district will be adopted if the article does not receive a majority vote of all school district voters in the school administrative unit. I think that that language is going to have to be re-vetted by the attorney, the way that's being written. Going on to Article Five, I've put this as...
I'm sorry, because why?
I'm just looking at the way it's written. Will be adopted if the article does not receive a majority vote of all school districts' voters voting in the school...
Technically, that could include Middleton.
Middleton.
And I'm not sure that's actually appropriate.
We have an opinion on that, so Article Four may not be needed.
Is that going to be discussed tomorrow night?
It's going to be discussed maybe tonight.
Well, maybe tonight, too. We'll see.
Okay. Moving forward, Article Five, I've put in there as a placeholder for the parent educators collective bargaining warrant article. Article Six is also related to Article Five. It's an option, historically has been placed out there, but it says, shall the Farmington School District, if Article Five is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article Five of the cost items only.
Yeah, and just if I may, it's to the voters, this is a good idea to adopt this, because it would cost, you have to go to Superior Court if isn't adopted, if Article Five, you have the one special meeting. So, you want to make sure you say yes to that, because it's more expensive if you don't.
Article Seven, shall the voters of the Farmington School District vote to authorize the school board, oops, I'll type it in. To enter into a four-year lease agreement for eighty thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, for the purpose of leasing one school bus for pupil transportation, and to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand and eighty dollars for the first year's payment for that purpose. This lease agreement contains an escape clause, or also known as a non-appropriation clause. And let's see, lastly, I had it, Article Eight, this is an optional warrant article, shall the Farmington School District vote to raise and appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars to be placed in the Outdoor Athletic Facilities Capital Reserve Fund, which was established in April nineteen ninety-nine, the sum to come from the June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July first. No amount raised through taxation. We've put this in here because the Outdoor Athletic Facilities Fund was the one that we used to build the fields, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we were looking to, if we could, replenish that.
Where did seven and eight come from? Did we have prior conversations about that?
No, I don't remember seven. I don't remember that.
We didn't, and that's why this is just a draft, a working draft for you.
Does anybody have any discussion on that?
Well, yeah, I mean, was there, did we have conversation about this whole bus issue and things like that? Where did this come from? I don't remember.
Bonnie is making a recommendation...
Okay.
...that one of the buses probably is to the point where it should be replaced because repairs, in fact, getting to the point where it may actually offset a portion of the lease payment. And so, Bonnie periodically comes to you and you place a warrant in the, an article in the warrant, to replace buses periodically.
How many buses do we lease now?
We've got three right now, three.
That are on active leases.
Right.
And it's obviously cheaper to lease.
Yeah. Rather than coming up with the eighty thousand dollars in one one. Yeah.
But to understand, though, that this is a lease...
It's a lease purchase.
We will own it.
You own the bus if they're in that four.
We will, we will own it.
What's the cost?
I know you're going to ask.
If you buy it outright.
It's in the article, it's eighty thousand...
No, if you buy it.
Right, it's eighty thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
That, no, eighty thousand three twenty would include...
Purchases seventy-six.
It is a, I, you know, something I left the file on my desk, it is approximately three to four thousand dollars in interest, over the term of four years. I can get those figures exactly for you, but they did come from...
So, the outright purchase is going to be about seventy-six.
Okay, so my question is, I feel like, why are we hearing about this now? Why didn't she talk about it when she was talking about the vans, so that we could at least have been on the same page as everybody else? Because I feel like we're not.
It's not where you're plunking it.
Yeah, it's fine.
And the outdoor athletic one is because we basically depleted? It's not...
Well, we took a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of that specific fund for doing the ball fields.
So, what's left there?
And, let's see, what's left in it? Let me see if I can find my financial report here. It's in the back of...
No, it's not, I don't know, I know it's not much, but...
Was it thirty or fifty?
Right. I'm just trying to get onto the... I'm just trying to call this up here, I'm just trying to...
So, while, while she's calling that, I bet our next meeting, could we just get, remember last year you gave us a list of all the funds and what was in them?
Yeah. It is in the back of your budget book, after, actually, it's about fourteen thousand dollars, after paying up a hundred and fifty, fourteen thousand six hundred.
The back of the budget book.
It's in the very back of your...
Yeah.
The binder.
The binder.
Oh, and I...
Are we anticipating, what's the, what's the, what's the, what's the point of this? Is it just to start to build it up again, or are we anticipating something else? I mean, you know, to me, so much money's been put into it, maybe we could just, just leave it be for a while, you know what I mean? Or do we anticipate that we're going to need more money in that account?
I think the intent is to replenish the account, because at some point, there are probably some additional, some, some point several years down the road, there are some improvements you're going to want to make. One of the things that you're going to have to give some thought to is seeding at the field. Is that something that you need to do immediately? No.
But that's something that's budgeted for in the outdoor portion of the facilities budget, isn't it?
But that's, that's this.
No, part of the budget. I mean, does it come out of...
No, that was...
It doesn't come out of this. When they, when they buy, when they go up and buy seed, from whether it's future supply or whatever...
No, seeding.
Oh, seeding, I'm sorry, I thought you said seeding.
No, no, bleachers.
The D's.
Right, bleachers.
I heard what you heard.
Oh, I heard seeds, I guess I'm closer.
No, we're talking about bleachers, that kind of thing. So, I think it makes sense, Joel, to try and replenish the account, so that at some point in time, depending on what kind of use the field is getting, and where the board decides it wants to go, whether you reach a point where someday you say, we want to do graduation outdoors, or something like that, and use the field for that, you have the ability to do that. Right now, I would say that you don't have the ability to really make too many more improvements to it, because the account is down. So, I think it makes sense to replenish it. The maintenance of the field is built into the operating budget, that's not something that comes out of here.
I'm thinking about that, too.
What, excuse me, what was the impact upon the tax rate?
For...
For the operating budget proposed?
I haven't done that worksheet yet, actually, because we...
All right, I also have a log, excuse me, I have an apology to make. I stated that our tax value in this town was four hundred fifty-one million. I called the town before, before I made that statement, and we got our wires crossed. It is actually four hundred forty million, five hundred nineteen thousand, so that would make a difference. But I had, I made that statement, so I just want to make sure people understand of that. I made a mistake.
I knew it was possible.
Well, it was, I will take, I'll take it always. You probably, you can figure out what happened.
No other recommendations for any other monies for capital reserve accounts?
No, because we think it's going to be a tough year right now.
Well, yeah.
And that would only come out if, if we had any leftover.
We're building a budget that I don't anticipate is going to have a lot of money left over in it.
So, I think we asked this before, but is it, can we put the tax impact for each article on? You can't, right? That I thought was...
It has to be, it has to be voted by the town that you do that.
Yeah.
It has to be a warrant article, asking the town if they want to do that on future warrants.
A warrant article generated by petition or by us?
We can generate.
Generated either way.
Oh.
Yeah, that's why I figured I'd bring that up now.
Let me get motion right now.
Second.
All right, all in favor of putting a warrant article to, for tax impact, to show up on next year's warrant article, right? Because it won't show up on this one. The tax impact would be on every warrant article that we... So, okay, any discussion on that? All in favor of doing that?
Aye.
Aye. So, please, I suppose.
Falls out?
Yeah. Yeah. Please, go. Anything else on the articles right now? So, we'll have some time to think about things, too.
Mr. Duff, you've got it.
The January...
Please, next meeting.
All right, what's the deadline on the warrant articles?
Probably the second Tuesday.
Twelve?
Well, it's January twelfth, right? That, that's when all the warrant articles would need to be done, because it involves a collective bargaining piece. And January twelfth is...
We have, it's coming tonight.
All right, so, moving on to E.S.S.A. information. E.S.S.A. stands for...
New acronym.
Every Student Succeeds Act.
Which is a bunch of words.
As opposed to the No Child Left Behind.
Okay, Every Student Succeeds Act.
Yeah, it's No Child Left Behind.
E.S.S.A.
Steroids.
All right.
I've included a couple of pieces of information from a variety of sources. There's one from the Council Chief State School Officers, which kind of talks about some of the prominent pieces of the new legislation that's been signed into law. I also have given you one from Ed Week that looks like this, that probably is a little bit more detailed, and it talks about some of the other issues in it. It appears that one of the big things is going to be some loosening of the, loosening of the restrictions on certain federal grants, like Title II and Title VI, and also some changes in allowing states to decide what accountability systems to use, so that smarter balance with all the hubbub that's gone on about it may, in fact, two or three years from now, not exist. It depends on how states choose to decide what their accountability systems are going to look like. It's still going to be required to have accountability systems, but there's going to be more flexibility from what I've read so far. And finally, the, the third sheet that I gave you is from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, and it talks about, it offers you a couple of different links where you can go to, to take a look at the breakdown of, of the law itself, the timelines for implementation, and that sort of thing. So, this information is in your packet for informational purposes. Quite frankly, I don't think anybody professes to know enough about it to talk intelligently about everything that's in it, but there are some significant...
Especially the Congress.
There are some significant changes in the law, and we're all going to have to spend a lot of time trying to catch up with it and figure out exactly how it impacts us locally. Another thing that I wanted to let you know that we just got notified about today, it's my understanding that at the end of last week, matter of fact, I think it was either Thursday or Friday, there were some changes made to the Affordable Care Act, one of which will affect us significantly. And that is that the imposition of what's commonly referred to as the Cadillac Tax has been postponed for two years.
I was surprised.
And so, it has been postponed to the year 2020. So, that gives, that gives particularly municipalities and school districts a little bit more time to try and figure out the landscape on what their liability is going to be. If I had to guess, I would guess that it's probably a topic that's going to be taken up legislatively again, to see if there can be changes based on either regional Cadillac Tax levels, or, or some kind of variation towards the amount. But, the legislation and the regulations have passed that it will not take effect till 2020. So, that's all I have.
Okay, so, any public participation?
Oh.
Oh.
Okay, good. No, you go ahead. No, you're also. I'm next, though.
Let's start with the Cadillac Tax, it's expanded. There've been a lot of conversation with the budget and so forth, negotiations for a new healthcare plan, looking at the Cadillac Tax coming in 2018. So, what's happening there? How does, how does the budget change? How are the negotiations going?
Those negotiations haven't begun, they'll begin sometime after the first of the year.
Okay. Because we're kind of dealing with the budget.
I understand. I know, Steve. But it's, it's a matter of when folks are available to be able to do it, and from, it's my understanding that it will begin after the first, the negotiations will begin after the first of the year.
So, when's the deliberative session?
Deliberative session is January thirtieth.
So, will we know by then?
We're going to have to.
Then we'll have to just address that deliberative session.
Okay. But we're still going to move forward with that, because I think there's still some savings in there.
Absolutely, we have to move forward with it, because it was basically a, it was a two-issue, it was a two-pawn issue. It was a short-term issue, which was the reduction in revenues we get with Middleton's second face pullout, and trying to affect some savings in the short term, as well as try to reduce our Cadillac Tax liability long-term. Okay, the immediate issue is the short-term savings. That hasn't changed.
Okay. I knew that there was a lot Cadillac tax prepared for, I didn't know how much.
Yeah, it does have a significant reduction in Cadillac Tax liability as the Cadillac Tax is structured currently.
Which can change for a lot of time, I believe.
It's a while from now till 2020.
On the buses, I knew the bus wire article was coming, so I know what you talked about at some meetings in my budget meetings, but I didn't know that you talked about, I know it's a medium-sized bus, it's not a full-size bus, so I know that it was somewhere.
But it was at the budget meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, Bonnie did discuss it at one point.
Yeah, but it may have been budget meetings, but I do know that that had been out there at least for the Budget Committee, so...
No, it's a forty-two passenger.
Yeah.
As opposed to a seventy-two.
Okay. It was at the budget meeting?
We've been leasing for a little while, and money has been cheap, it's going to start getting a little bit more expensive. We go through buses fairly regularly, it's predictable. I'd really like to see you guys get away from the leasing, and maybe using some capital reserve funds and funding those, because I know it's not a full-size bus every year, and some years it's vans and things, so it's, we can't budget a set amount every year, but maybe with some, some good budgeting and some capital reserve funds that we fund out of operating revenue, we can start buying buses rather than leasing and save that lease expense. I don't think we've ever leased a bus and then said, we're not going to continue the lease, have we?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, we need the buses. It's just, this was a way to minimize the impound. We need the buses, you know, it's just, this was a way to minimize the impact each year, but you do that every year, and you end up where you would have been anyways if you just bought it outright, so. Uh, and then on the warrant to put money in the athletic fields fund, would we be able to do the same thing and have more flexibility if we put it in the Building and Grounds Fund?
Honestly, Steve, I'm not sure, and unless I could read what the phraseology was that created the two, I'm not really sure. I, I honestly don't know the answer to the question. I, I'd have to look at what language created the funds to know for sure.
Because if the Building and Grounds Fund lets you do the athletic facilities and other things, and you get any more flexibility, I'd rather see the money go there rather than be locked into...
No, it's, it's a good point.
Just outdoor facilities.
It's a good point.
Yeah, because then you can cover, you know, wherever the need arises, it's more flexibility.
That's why we have public hearings.
Well, and public comment, so you guys are going to talk about it, so it's an easy change to make.
January, I can, we'll do it tomorrow.
Okay, anything else?
No, that was it.
Thank you.
No, definitely, sir, thank you.
Anyone else? For a public comment?
Oh, I, oh, yeah, I'm, oh, it's probably, I'm, I'm going to be a poll for a minute. Somebody asked, a constituent asked about public hearings. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, could you explain the budget process, both for the SAU and the school district?
What, what specifically are you looking?
Start to finish, hit it with the mouth talks. What happens when deliberative session, we can work the other one. You know, we start a budget by, um, what department hits, and then on from there, then the school board gets it.
The administrative team usually at the end of September, beginning of October, begins developing their budget, um, usually by the, I would say, the first meeting in November. Um, if, if at the latest, mid-November, but usually the first meeting in November, we try to be in a position to present it to the school board. Uh, we usually take a couple of meetings to present with the school board. We then, the first Saturday in December, meet with the budget committee on a Saturday, um, and present the budget to them. Uh, there are usually at least one meeting, if not more, um, with the budget committee asking questions and reviewing the budget, and then a public hearing is held on the budget, and also warrant articles, uh, around mid-January. And the budget committee at that point will take a vote on its budget, which becomes the budget committee's budget after it's, it's been reviewed, and that will be the budget that will go on the warrant, uh, which will be voted on by the voters.
Well, it's got, no, the deliberative session.
Well, the deliberative session, at which time, you know, people are free to discuss and, and amend if that's what they choose to do. Uh, the SAU budget is treated similarly like a warrant article. Um, again, the budget is prepared, it's presented, which we did on December eighth this year with the SAU Board, which, um, now consists of Farmington Board and one Middleton representative, should they so choose to attend. Um, they did not at the last meeting. Um, the budget is then put up for a public hearing, which is scheduled to take place tomorrow night, and, again, it becomes a warrant article with both a default budget and a approved budget, and goes on the warrant, and it can be discussed at the deliberative session, but it cannot be changed at the deliberative session, and the voters vote in the election with it. Thank you.
Okay, anything else from anyone else? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to go into non.
Oh, can you do that? Let's have recess.
Okay.
And everybody leave, except for school members.
Okay, can we do that?
Yes.
All right.
You do it, I don't do it.
I'm going to call for a recess, then. I'm going to ask everyone to leave except for school board members.